This special meeting for Monday, April the 4th, 2022 will come to order. I'll take motion for an approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the agenda be approved as presented.
Motion has been approved and it has been made and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion?
Question. Does this mean that we can ask questions during the budget session and we have to add that to the agenda?
It's a board work session, so we'll have part blunt to ask questions.
It's meant to be interactive.
Yeah, alright. Just checking.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Pass unanimously. Now, now you can ask questions.
We'll let Mr. Jeanette, let them do the presentation first. And then as we go through, y'all can, you know, we can stop. So we'll turn it over to Mr. Jeanette and her finance team to kick it off.
I went to see Dolly the other day and I told her, and I want to help you some about the way to Red Falls.
Okay.
You're ready, Mr. Chairman?
You're ready, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Do I need to use the mic or?
Yeah, I guess so.
So they can pick it up on the recording.
Yes, absolutely. Good afternoon. Thank you for indulging the finance staff and special thanks to Greg and Shereen for being here as we worked very well as a team to develop the budget for Chester County. And I want to make sure that you hear your questions and the conversation that we have as we move forward in presenting the budget to you in May for first reading for the 2223 school year. Yes, this is meant to be interactive. I want you to ask questions. I want you to make comments because we will build a budget based on your questions and comments. So first of all, I would like to go through the agenda and what we plan to cover today. You do have a copy of the PowerPoint in front of you and we will follow this review of the new funding plan and its effects on Chester County. We're going to look at the current vacancies, the 2223, we have a colleague already prepared who will cover that for us. Then we're going to look at review of school requests for 2223. You have that spreadsheet in front of you too. And then you have a summarization on priorities. We took a little different approach this year and then we took all of the school requests and we prioritized them based on priority one as a must have. Priority two is a, we can probably wait till next year. We'll revisit it for next year. And then priority three is a wish list. So we have set those priorities that we will discuss a little later in the agenda. Next, we will look at the district office request for 2223 and the effects of the budget on that. And then considerations for the budget for 2223. Okay, I'm good so far?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. So getting first reading is Monday, May the 23rd. So you might be asking why we're starting this early. Well, this gives the finance team sufficient time based on what we know and don't know on the state budget in preparation for that first reading on May 23rd. Gives us an idea of what the regular board wishes to go based on your comments and considerations that we're looking at. Okay. So without further ado, let's look at the new funding plan. We have presented some of that, but I want to give you a little bit more detail than you've received in regular budget meetings. So the budget has approved through the full house. If you'll remember, the governor submitted as part of his budget, not as a separate bill, a new funding plan. It was approved in the House with some tweaks. Senate Finance actually begins their action this week in subcommittee meetings. Because of some of the concerns about the results out of the House and what the numbers look like, there are several finance folks and superintendents attending a subcommittee meeting tomorrow. I knew you as board members got something from School Force Association. I will be recommending Chester at that meeting in the morning. Again, there are some other superintendents and some other finance folks that will be attending as well. Senator Fanning has been made very well aware of our concerns and will be there. All of his fellow subcommittee will be there to support us in our deliberations. Okay. The state minimum salary schedule with the House passage, remember, this is what the House passed, okay, sets the minimum salary for beginning teachers at $40,000. So zero years experience, first year teacher with a bachelor's degree sets a minimum salary of $40,000. Current language in the House version requires districts to maintain their local percentage. They're talking to Senate about perhaps relaxing that a little bit depending on how the voting ends up. Currently Chester pays 11% above the state minimum salary schedule. So we are above the state minimum. So statewide strategies and key factors to consider. To fund classrooms, and this is the proviso as it's put forward in the budget, to fund classrooms based on statewide average student teacher ratio. Now, in my little bullet there, you will notice that this is not a student teacher ratio that we know. Like we set priorities 34 years ago that our elementary grades, many of those, would be at a 20 to 1 because we want to make sure that those students are getting the attention they need as they move into the testing years and so we made that decision to fund those elementary grades, some of them at a 20 to 1 ratio. What this bill does is it takes the amount of money available, it takes the amount of a teacher salary they want to get to and creates a student teacher ratio. It is simply part of the formula. It is not, we are not desirous to get to that. And I'll tell you, when we first were introduced to this, when the governor put his original plan together, it was presented in the governor's budget process, it was an 11.7 student teacher ratio, 11.71. The House put in $227 million additional and it went to 11.2. We received the Department of Education's projections at the end of week before last. And because there was additional money that had been allocated on program share, it went to 10.9. So the more money that gets put into the pot, the actual, the teacher student ratio comes down. It is simply part of the allocation. It is not that we have to get to a 10.9 student teacher ratio. Believe it or not, on average, Chester is about at 10.9. Because when you take all the classes and put them together, if you should be at smaller AP classes and some smaller classes, we are actually below the desired, if you will, student teacher ratio. So it is not what we have to do. It is simply part of the allocation methodology. Yes, ma'am.
So what you're saying is for the teacher student ratio, it goes across the board from kindergarten all the way through 12?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So they simply took the number of teachers we had, divided into the numbers, and came up with a statewide average. Some districts are low, some districts are above. It was just a methodology to give the money out, to allocate the money. It really means nothing. I hate to say it, but that's what we have determined. It really means nothing.
So that's not to say that every class in Chester County is below 20 students.
That is correct. That is correct.
There are going to be some classes, I know you tried to do equity.
Yes, ma'am.
But there are going to be some classes that are over 20 and some under depending on the distribution of students.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Sometime, this is a question for another time, but I still like an answer. Sometime after school starts next year, we like, I'd like to see the number of students per class, not necessarily per teacher, per school. So you can look at that and see that there's equity.
Okay. That certainly can be done with data in PowerSchool.
Now, as of January the 15th, we had to tell the state the number of teachers we actually had employed in this district. So what is the actual number of teachers? And does that include only classroom teachers? Does that also include counselors and school nurses?
No, it includes, and there's actually several different reporting periods. Our initial reporting period is actually November the 30th. Is that right, Shereen? We have to have the C educator updated. The end of November. We currently have 381, 381 staff. They're not all teachers because there are other positions that are funded on the state minimum seat teacher salary schedule. They are teachers, K-12 teachers, should include pre-K. They are counselors. They are library media specialists. They are ROTC instructors. They are school psychologists. They are, oh goodness, nurses. You mentioned nurses. So there are wide varieties. So it's anybody that is funded on the minimum salary schedule.
Okay. And that includes our interventionists that we have?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No, ma'am.
But they actually interact with students?
They do interact with students. But what you have to remember is we do not receive state funding for any teacher that is federally, 100% federally funded.
But we, but we approve the teachers for employment that are going to receive federal funding.
Yes, ma'am.
So we do interact with the federal funds?
Oh, so yes. And those federal funds have to pick up those funds for those staff. Yes, ma'am.
Well, how many teachers are we now predicting we're going to need over the 381?
None.
None?
None.
That is a number we can take into next budget year?
Yeah. Because we have not, if I remember correctly, Mr. Sumner, we don't recommend any additional FTEs.
Not at this time.
Not at this time.
Yes, sir.
And remember too, those are FTE figures and not bodies. So they look at the actual full-time equivalent positions because you could have some folks that are part federal and part state supporting. So the department gives us money based on those that are eligible for funding on the state minimum salary schedule. But right now, it's 381. Okay. Alright. So I will tell you, just give you a little bit of information. So I told you about the changes in the student teacher ratio based on as the money has gotten higher, the student ratio has come down. It's part of the calculation. Alright? The cost of the teacher, and I think I've shared this with you before, which is an average cost, is based on a master's degree and 12 years of experience with, again, on the minimum salary schedule, is $69,153,000. That is how they base the funding for the new formula, based on that amount. So there are going to be some highs, some lows. That's how they calculate it. Now, I will tell you, for those of you who may have watched the governor's press conference last Monday, he said three things. He alluded to three things as part of the funding model. It simplifies the formula. You would have seen those in this state that beg to differ. I can show you the calculation sheet that we got. It does not simplify the formula in our opinion. It does raise the pay, but it does not raise the pay for everyone. As was put in some articles in the state newspaper and others, we could give the raise that we want to. Currently, Chester pays $40 below the state minimum of $40,000. We could give them $40. Now, I don't think we're going to do that. But based on the premise of the model, we would only have to pay them above $2,000, $40,000 plus our local share. Okay? And the third thing is it makes it easy to understand. Again, we would beg to differ because we all understand how the Education Finance Act works and this is totally different. And we'll talk about the differences here now. Okay, talk a little bit more. Alright, so I'll give you the old funding model and the terminology with which you're familiar. Education Finance Act, we talked about that for years, the base student cost that the state funds us on and weighted pupil units. That takes the student enrollment or average daily membership and multiplies it times the weightings that are assigned in each category for your students depending on where they are at their education levels. For pupil funding, this is historically the way districts have been funded, on a per pupil basis of the base student cost. Okay? Chester right now, in the current model, has weighted pupil units of 6456.63. That's not our enrollment. That is our weighted pupil units. Our enrollment is about 4,800. Times each of the weightings puts us at 6456 or .63 of the state total. That's going to become important in a minute. Alright, let's look at the new funding model. A to classrooms. So what we were told when we first were presented this, forget everything you've known about how funding works in the state of South Carolina. Base student costs and EFA are out of the window. However, they are looking to amend permanent law through proviso because right now, the changes are in proviso 1.3. All of the changes to this funding are not made to the Education Finance Act but part of a temporary proviso, which means it would have to be changed from year to year. So defined cost per teacher, we alluded to that a little bit ago. The $69,000 is desirous with the amount of money and the fringe associated with it. And then weighted pupil units, we still are familiar with that terminology, but there are some changes to that. Okay? The targeted student teacher ratio, we'll talk about that, the targeted student teacher ratio. So districts will be funded at the targeted, but as we said, as the money goes up, the targeted pupil teacher ratio goes down. And we have discussed, it kind of came to a couple of us, we were talking about it. And then when Ms. Williams from the Department of Ed sent out our projections a week or so ago, she added more money because it was money that was unallocated on the old EFA formula because student counts were down statewide. So they did a proportionate share of the funding, thus giving us more money. And now the targeted pupil teacher ratio was 10.9. Now, what they're also telling us is that this could change every year depending on the desire of legislation and what they want to do with teacher salaries. But this is simple. Okay? Alright, so right now with the new weightings, Chester's weighted pupil units are 7,7745 or 65, or .65% of the state total. That's, that's important, which means weightings have changed. Okay? So let's look at the weightings. So how did the weightings change? So existing K-12 students, all students are at a weighting of 1. But the student can qualify for any of the additional add-on weightings from the high achieving down. So any of those add-on categories, a child could be high achieving, in poverty, and qualify for both of those add-on weightings. Or a child could be ESOL and academic assistance. So a child can qualify for multiple add-on categories. Okay? So students with disabilities categories in the current model range anywhere from 1.74 to 2.57. So those children with IEPs, five or four plans, depending on how their IEP is set up, they could be in one of those categories in the range of 1.74 to 2.57. Career and technology currently is a 1.29 weighting, so those are not at 1 in the existing model. High achieving is a .15, academic assistance .15, limited English proficiency is a .20, pupils in poverty is .20, dual credit enrollment is .15, and there is currently no additional weighting for speech therapy in the current model because it falls up into the students with disabilities. Okay? The new model takes all the K-12 students, again leaves them at 1, but now all students with disabilities are at 2.6, which is good because that gives us a little more funding to serve our special needs population. Now, one of the ones that hurts that we are taking to the Senate tomorrow is the career and technology. They have reduced the career and technology back down to 1, which means the child could qualify for any of the add-on weightings. But we know that career and technology equipment is expensive. Those teachers have specialized degrees and it costs a little bit more. We are asking them to reinstate that 1.29%. Okay? High achieving is the same. Academic assistance is the same. Limited English proficiency is reduced to .15. Pupils in poverty though is increased to .50. Chester benefits from that increase because we do have a high percentage of our students in poverty. Yes, ma'am?
If you don't mind me asking, what are the stipulations with the decrease regarding career technology?
What I was told from the governor's office was, we're funding people, not programs. That was their logic. We're funding people, not programs. And again, you've got some folks that career and technology have specialized degrees and you would need a little more money. Now, what we also ask, if you're going to leave the weighting there, put more money in the Education Improvement Act line for career and technology, for equipment, for professional development, for those kinds of things that will benefit our K students.
And it seems like they would considering the progress of this of technology, you know, and the expectation for the students to be proficient in that area, that they would reconsider that.
And because it's becoming much more prevalent for a child to go to a career technology center to get certifications and not necessarily degrees and they will, I mean, we've got children graduating from our career center who could get a certification and go directly into the workforce. But with reduced funding, that could be detrimental. And that is one of the ones that we are presenting tomorrow that we would like for them to sit and put that back.
How do they figure out who is high achieving? Is that grades only? Is that on testing?
No, ma'am. I'll tell you what high achieving is. That is actually four categories. If a child is coded as gifted and talented academic, gifted and talented artistic, they're in an advanced placement class, or they're international backwater. And those are the four high achieving categories.
Okay.
So they have to be tested and qualified.
Very limited.
Yes.
Right. That's.
They have to be tested and qualified for one of those categories. It's recorded in PowerSchool and then that's put out and we receive funding for the high achieving portion.
That's a disparity there too.
Dual credit enrollment. Okay, they completely eliminated that. We know our dual credit enrollment population has increased over the last couple of years. We got children graduating from high school with associate's degrees.
Yes.
From both USC Lancaster and from York Tech. We have asked them to put that back and our argument is because that is a parent choice.
Yes.
To send their children to get dual enrollment credit at an institute or higher ed, please put that weighting back because it helps us buy their books. It helps us support them at those IEGs. The other thing is, if you've got a student that graduates from USC Lancaster with an associate's degree and has completed two years of college, Shereen's daughter is a prime example of that, then moved to USC, maintains their grades, you're looking at savings of two years of lottery scholarship money to the state of South Carolina. Because that child already has two years of college under the belt.
And you would think they would consider.
We hope so. We hope the Senate is going to consider.
It's simple to you.
Yeah, it's simple to us.
Pull on language.
Yeah.
And again, I asked the question at the governor's office and we, I was told, we're funding people, not programs. We're funding students out of it. So how is that any different? But, so we are asking them to put that back in. Speech therapy has also got an increase and that should have been .15. I'm sorry, I apologize. No type of one there. But technically, the child would be a 1.15 because that would be an addition to the 1.0. So if a child has an IEP but they're only speech and don't have any other categories of special education needs, they would be a 1.15. Now, if a child has additional special needs categories, which this has always been the practice in South Carolina, you put them in the category that will generate the most money for the district. So currently, if a child is in need of speech and they test autism, you would put them in 2.57. So it gets you more money and then you, so that's, it's going to depend on the individual student.
Roughly, do you know the percentage of our students in the district who receive that particular service?
Speech, I do not, but I'm pretty sure we can probably figure that out. We can find out.
I'm just curious. You don't have to do anything extra, Mr. Chairman. I was just wondering.
Okay. So that's, that's how we went from 6,500 weighted pupils to 7,700 weighted pupils.
For the students with disabilities, is there a, currently, is there a rubric of some sort that determines from 1.74 to 2.57? And that part has changed so that everyone that's identified with a disability gets?
2.6. Yes, sir. There are, Mr. Chairman, there are various categories. There's LD, mentally disabled. There's EH, emotionally handicapped. There's ENH, emotionally mentally handicapped. There's visual. There's hearing. There's autism. There are about, if I remember correctly, 11 current categories. Now, every child who has, has an IEP and has a special needs disability code would receive a 2.6 weighting.
And we're going to need it because the way the state is, is pushing this voucher thing and they're saying these schools don't have to take special needs.
They do not.
Then what's going to happen is what I prophesied 20 years ago. Eventually, what they want to do is suck all the life out of public schools. And they want the most expensive care that you can give a student being educated to be done in the public schools. And that would be children who have special needs.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So while in the big scheme of things, we like this one, this district, all districts in the state are required to meet a maintenance of effort for IDEA funds. And this puts more money in the general fund for special needs children. So the actual increase in weighting there does help the district and provides more, more funding for our special needs children. Okay? Alrighty. So, let's do a little bit more. Alright. So as I told you before, weighted pupils no longer drive the cost of the program and are only calculated to allocate the funds to the district. So we receive a program share of our weighted pupils to the state's weighted pupils to determine our allocation. Okay? So we'll look at a few facts here. So our weighted pupils are the 7,7745 that I gave you a little bit ago. The state weighted pupils are 1.2 million. With the new weightings, we receive .65 of the total money available. A total entitlement of $4.7 billion. A .65 would give Chester a total entitlement of $30.795 million. Now, I say total entitlement and here's why. So the index of taxpaying ability, our ability to pay at the local level, that's part of the EFA and also part of this, determines the split of our local and state share of our funding. It is always the premise that the districts have to put in their portion of the vote. It is always the premise that the districts have to put in their portion of the vote. Chester's index for next year is .00462. Take all the indices in the state, add to one. So that gives the proportionate share of our wealth to the state, or the equivalent of a 16 percent local sum. Local funding required is $5,462.68 of that $30 million. And I asked me, and I anticipate this, what is it now? 3.4 million? Good. Where that's a little different is, if you'll recall, the programs that are part of this funding model, there are three in the general fund, in the state general fund, which we record in our general fund. There are EFA, the fringe benefit line, and a teacher raise line that was in the budget for the current year, that was put in last year for this year. There are also four lines in the Education Improvement Act that are rolled up, that were also part of this model. Never before had EIA dollars had to have a local match. This model requires a local match on the EIA dollars. We are also going to request that that be done away with. Because since the inception of the Education Improvement Act in 1984, which is a penny sales tax increase, never had we had to match EIA dollars. This model requires us to match EIA dollars. So the difference in the $5 million and the 3.4 that we are now is roughly the equivalent of the EIA. We are asking them to do away with that local match requirement in Education Improvement Act dollars. Now, what we will do is, once we know our allocation of the four lines, they are the teacher salary supplement and fringe associated with that, aid to district, and students at risk. Those four lines are rolled up in EIA. We can, by flexibility, transfer them over to the general fund so they become part of the budget because they will be used to pay teachers. So we will show that in the budget as revenue, as part of the general fund budget, once we know our final allocation. We're hoping to get rid of the match. So the state funding estimate, right now, the way the program currently exists, passed in the house, is .84 percent, or 84 percent of the state, of the money will be given to us from the state, or $25.7 million. There, yes, and I mentioned this a little bit ago. The weighted pupil units, because of the reduction in students across the state, garnered some extra money in the Education Finance Act. The Department of Education allocated out a program share of our weighted pupils to the state weighted pupils, and that gives an additional $230,000. So the total estimated funding under the new methodology is $25.9 million to Chester.
And it had been 37.95 and so on?
Well, that is what we are entitled to, because of the local state match.
Okay.
That's what we're entitled to, all right? The current funding, under the lines I mentioned to you, is $22.7 million. If you, if all things remain constant, you take those seven lines, that's what we're currently getting under those seven lines. We are proposed to get an increase of $3.2 million. All right, any questions on that? I just wanted to give you some of the factors that go into how this will. So see, this is much simpler, right? I was just told we have 127 speech students currently. See, that's where they're here. Yep, okay? All right, so at this time, we're going to ask Mr. Snodder, he provided me with the administrative vacancies. As of when they last week, they may be a little different when he gave it to me on us prepared today.
All right, so you'll see that we, good evening to everyone. We'll see that we don't have any current administrative vacancies for the district. And hopefully that will remain. The next slide will show our teaching vacancies, not teaching vacancies by school. So with Chester Park Arts, we have a third grade, fourth grade, special ed, three positions there. Inquiry, pre-K, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. Chester Park Cult, we have kindergarten music, special ed, and a reading interventionist. Chester Middle, business education, two math, science, social studies, special ed, and a school counselor. At Chester Career Center, fire in emergency. Chester High School, ELA interventionist, math, Spanish, two science, and one special ed. Lewisville Elementary School is art, gifted, talented, and a special ed. Lewisville Middle is ELA interventionist. Lewisville High School is PE, and athletic director, PE, special ed, and art. Great Falls Elementary, second grade, two fourth grade, media specialist, math interventionist, reading interventionist. And Great Falls High School, chorus, two middle, ELA, secondary math, and PE. Some of these positions are positions that are held by retirees who have the opportunity to reapply for those positions. So you probably see several on there that are in that particular category. And remember that this list changes day by day. So I think I prepared this on Thursday or Friday last week, and we've already had some recommendations for some of these positions that you see available on this vacancy list, so that's changing. Contracts went out today, so that will, that will also, you know, probably allow us to have some changes as well, you know, determining. And what we do is give our letters of intent in December in hopes that if there are people who are not going to return to us, they'll let us know early enough so that the positions can be posted. And we've had some positions posted early and have filled some of those positions for the 22, 23 school year. The next list is a list of non-teaching positions by school. That would be our paraprofessionals, any position, behavior interventionist, those positions as well. So Chester Park Arts, we have a behavior interventionist, paraprofessional for special ed class. Chester Park Inquiry has no vacancies in that area currently. Chester Park Cult, two paraprofessionals, media center and kindergarten paraprofessional. Chester Middle, special ed paraprofessional and a paraprofessional for the media center. Chester Career Center, no vacancies. Chester High School, special ed paraprofessional. Lewisville Elementary School, no vacancies. Lewisville Middle School, bookkeeper. Lewisville High School, no vacancies. Chester elementary, uh, Great Falls, excuse me, elementary, I was going to say Chester elementary. Great Falls Elementary, paraprofessional, kindergarten. And then Great Falls High School, as you know, the position that was left vacant, career development facilitator by the passing of Ms. Brunson. So those are the current vacancies that we had in the district for the 22, 23 school year.
Now, wasn't, wasn't Ms. Brunson shared between Lewisville High School and Great Falls?
Yes, yes, yes ma'am. And that will still, it will still be the same.
Please have that home base site location so that it's split.
Any questions? I know he will work diligently to get those taken care of.
Work.
Yes. Okay. All right, so, the next, that you recognize this picture? I thought I would at least show a picture of a school that we might have. That's the person. All right, so at this time, we want to go over the school request spreadsheet and priorities and have discussion about those. The school spreadsheet is the color-coded document that you can take a look at your reader. We always do, yes ma'am, we always do color coding if there's other funding available. Many of those, if you will notice, are in yellow, and they are referendum-related. So we highlighted those as such, that the schools requested them. If there was other funding that we thought they might could use, we put that on there, one of the grants they can apply for. Or if they're small enough amounts that they've got available general fund monies left in their budget for this year, that we would recommend they go ahead and use this year's allocation. And after today, I will be sending that information to the principals and saying, we recommend you use your current year allocation and go ahead and purchase those this year, so they will not be in the budget for next year. So I would encourage you to look at that document if you have any questions. Because what we did, as we discussed earlier, we took those priorities and sat in a room with senior staff, the executive directors, Dr. Graham, Dr. Moore, and Ms. Licken, and Mr. McDowell, and actually assigned priorities to each of these that we felt necessary to address as part of the budget discussion. So priority one is a must-have. Priority two is, let's revisit it next year, it's not essential at this moment. And then priority three is a wish list. So you have that document, and I'm actually going to pull it up on the screen. Or I'm going to attempt to pull it up on the screen.
And I have, with the must-haves, when we discuss this, the must-haves are things that will help maintain integrity of programming, operation program at school, so let's keep that in mind of where this is. The goal will be, as for your discussion, to see, you look at the other two areas, if you all have a discussion on something you feel might need to be moved to one or taken out, then that's the discussion we want to hear from you all as a board. If you feel something needs to be moved from two and three to one, or moved out of one, that can be right now.
Um, under priority three, inquiry staff additions, is that indicative of the fact that they may not have?
No, that's again, that's the principal desires to have on top of what you already have.
Okay, to have that extra staff support there for whatever reasons with the students?
Yes.
By looking at that total, it kind of indicates to me that maybe she needs additional staffing support at her school to request a budget that large and that is titled inquiry staff additions. I mean, I'm not sure what the.
Yeah, when you look at this, it tells you exactly what.
Okay, what the, sorry.
And again, keep in mind, the principal hasn't been one. When you're asked, just give us what you want, that's what the principal will do. He needs everything under the sun or moon. It doesn't mean they need it, it's that they, we asked us, give us your request.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a case where it's extra support, it's staff needed at that particular school, and it's not there. And maybe, maybe providing some extra positions there to give the support would be something to consider.
If it would have been a detriment, we would have had it as a priority one.
Right.
Keep that in mind. Yeah, two.
Now, when you have, under priority one must-have, it says elementary school front office support. Is that every elementary school?
Can we go, do you mind if we go down?
Not at all, I was waiting for that, because people were asking.
Ma'am, I'd love to go down the list.
You don't go down yet.
That's okay.
I'm all for that.
Yes, Mr. McDowell pointed out, and Mr. Snodder can address this too, the increase for inquiry was they wanted an additional teacher for every grade level.
Is the student population that great?
No.
That they may need an extra teacher?
No, not now.
Okay.
Not now. That's why it's in priority three.
I know it's a wish list, but I guess I'm, you know.
But that's the only question, I hope it's a hard question.
I know it's a wish list, but you know.
Great question.
Right.
All right, so.
If they had it all, what would it be?
Right.
I would love to be able to say, we're going to get so much money from the state of South Carolina that we are going to be able to fund everything.
Right, I understand.
I find that hard to believe. All right, so, let's go down the list. Let's go down to priority one must-have. The cost of living increases, we're actually going to look at those shortly. Those are not included in the total at the bottom of that column. And I'll show them to you because we ran different scenarios based on the needs of other categories. As you know, the only, the only state mandated salary schedules are for teachers and bus drivers. Everybody else is funded at the will of the board, okay? Now, we would automatically give them a step increase unless, heaven forbid, we would go back in 19 and now freeze them. But everybody would get a step increase, but we wish to give everybody a cost of living, especially since the bus drivers and the teachers will get some sort of raise, okay? All right, so the increase to the teachers, right now, we have figured at $4,000. And we'll show you those numbers in a minute, okay? The bus driver increase is $32,141. That is required 8 percent. So in the general fund, the state is giving money to the districts to fund, again, on the minimum salary schedule for bus drivers. Currently, the bus drivers by the state for the first year of experience is a starting hourly pay of $8.44. Chester pays $16.36. So you say, okay, we're already above. Actually, we're almost double. Their intent is, if they provide us money for the state minimum salary schedule, we increase by that percentage as well, which is 5 percent. They also, in a special proviso, that's in a statewide proviso, if the state employees get a raise, they include the bus drivers. And yes, I know, bus drivers do not work for the state of South Carolina. They work for the Chester County School District. There will be money, but again, based on the state minimum salary schedule. So be, that being said, this equivalent is a 68 cent an hour increase for bus drivers on the state minimum salary schedule. So every bus driver would get a 68 cent an hour increase. Okay? Chester High has requested an additional math interventionist of $70,000. That's the average teacher, plus some fringe. Currently, Chester has a math and an ELA interventionist that's being paid for out of ESAR. But what they are desirous to do is get an additional math interventionist because of the students that need the additional help in math. Chester High has also requested that their guidance administrative assistant go from 210 to 20, my Shereen? 220 to 245. So she would be considered a full-time, everyday employee. This individual works more than 220 anyway. High school guidance, you can imagine, is very, very busy, especially in the summer. And this individual actually coming and work is not being reimbursed for it. So Dr. Graham requested that we move this individual to a 245-day contract, and the increase of that was $36,000. We see the potential for our early college program to grow tactically increased. We currently are paying our current assistant principal at Chester High an extra duty supplement, but we see this program growing. So we're requesting a $10,000 early college director stipend as additional duties for this person to assist with this program.
Now, are all the children in this new college program from Chester High School?
No ma'am, they're from all three.
Okay, well, there were about eight to 10 students. How many students were actually involved in the new college program this year?
This year, the inaugural year, there were 11 students. So remember in the presentation, the month before last, or at the beginning of the semester, that we have 45, 44 students who have applied for this upcoming school year. So we're currently going through, they're taking the Accuplacer, which is the test for your tech, to see who can be able to plead an application.
So does this, does this early college director do the scheduling for all the students at the? So does this, um, does this early college director do the scheduling for all the students at the three different high schools?
Yes, ma'am, she works with the administrators and Dr. Moore, our executive director of secondary ed, actually the transportation and your tech, so yes, ma'am, she collaborates with it.
Does she get, does the person get any stipend now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the amount of that stipend?
Uh, fifteen, fifteen, uh, twenty-five hundred, yes.
Yes.
But we expect the program to grow, which will take more of our time.
So right now the stipend is $5,000 a year.
Yes, ma'am.
So this, this would be a $10,000 a year, not on top of the five?
No, ma'am.
Just $10,000.
$10,000 total, yes, ma'am, so an increase of five.
Okay, and does this person work during this 245 days?
Um, that line comes a little bit well, it actually is, um, next. So...
Okay, so they would get an increase in their salary and more days and then a stipend?
There's potential, particular AP would, yes, ma'am. So the principals have been asking for this for a couple of years. They are desirous of their assistant principals to move to a 245-day contract. They are currently on a 220-day contract. When the summer is around, they begin their planning, it's imperative that their APs are part of that discussion. Uh, Dr. Moore did a survey with them and they are all desirous of moving to this. The benefit, one, is an additional salary, and two, they will now get vacation. So those are the two benefits, and they are very amenable to moving to 245-day contracts, all APs.
All levels.
And how many are there? Do you know?
Um, thirteen, four, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, I believe. So the increase to that would be $153,000.
That would be the total increase for, for all of them, not individually, but from all of them.
Oh, all of them, yes, ma'am, that's a total, yes. I think that all of them are.
Just, just what they?
Yes, and that is, that is the associated fringe for them as well. That is, that is the increase to move all assistant principals to a 245-day contract.
Okay.
Okay?
Once you run into a lot of them, we're coming in anyway. And it's not fair to have them work with something like that. They're twelve-month employees.
Yeah, they're always...
So what would happen, this current year, their last day would be June 13th. And then they would come back July 1, beginning their 245-day contract.
Okay.
Again, though, now they will get leave, they will generate vacation days, where they currently do not. Okay? Um, that just segue right into that line, thank you, Mr. Ford. Um, technology instruction at the Career Center, and that is our current SWAT director. Do you want to talk about that with Mr. Ford?
Yeah, currently, the person that is in that position is, um, if you remember when we started our one-to-one initiative, we created the SWAT team. Um, and then this person was assisting and teaching students and then using those students to help with some of the repairs and those kinds of things with some of the technology. Um, well, um, at this point, of course, the IT department really needs that person to kind of be full-time IT. Um, and then Ms. Dickerson at the Career Center would like for that classroom to transition into computer science for that particular, um, uh, position. So it would be adding the computer science FTE to be a full-time computer science course at the Career Center. And then the FTE for the technology person will be a full-time FTE for technology, for technology tech mission.
So who is going to receive the $70,000? The person who stays at the Career Center or the person who handles the SWAT team? Or is that going to be the same person?
It's not, well, it won't be the same person, it can split it up, it'll be a different person. So the person who does FTE for a full-time, um, IT will be on the lead tech schedule. So this person for seventy is an average for a teacher with a fringe. So it really depends on the person's experience level as to what that salary would be.
So now we don't have a technology person at the Career Center?
Yes, so the technology, the technology tech is part-time doing some classes and then part-time doing tech.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So they want the person to be dedicated to one, instead of trying to split between the two.
So what you, what you're adding is a teacher at the technology center, full-time?
Full-time.
Okay, uh, when you all add that, would you please just tell us what they're actually teaching? Because years ago, when the earth was cooling, we actually taught C++ and some other coding. And children got jobs out of school. There are several I can name that had wonderful tech jobs, but then we quit for whatever reason. And we're told that, oh, that wasn't necessary, they would learn in elementary, but they didn't. Um, so...
And I think that was Ms. Dickerson's concern.
Yes, this will help with that one.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned was.
Well, that's my concern, is that we have all this technology and there are all these jobs out there. And not everybody wants a college degree person to come in and handle their IT or their cybersecurity or whatever.
Right, yes, ma'am. And that was another area that she mentioned as well, cybersecurity, all of that being taught with this person. But the person that's in that role now, with it being split, is just not an ideal situation for that.
And this person would, of course, have a contemporary curriculum that they follow to teach the most, the latest
Yes.
technology that should be, you know, cohesive with today's...
You would, that's a role you can't go to and take it.
Right.
You would know, you can't take that position, you have to have a skill set and the certifications.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, the next line. Um, if you remember several years ago, for those of you who are on the board, you graciously put $35,000 line in the budget as we desperately needed to replace band uniforms. We are through that cycle, that first three-year cycle, and moved into instruments. But what we failed to do was address the instrument needs at our middle schools. Two of our three are growing rapidly and have a lot of interest and they need some instruments. So we are requesting that we put a $35,000 line in the budget to address middle school instrument needs.
And I'll be a rotation.
Yes, it will be, well, yes, it will be a rotation. Whoever needs it most will start there. Probably it would make sense that we do it the same rotation as the other, but we really need to look at the needs. Who is growing the most, who needs it the most? Um, we're going to address some current year needs with the existing budget and get them at least started on the process of getting some new instruments.
That's a wonderful idea, you're encouraging violence among band directors.
Yeah. Did you know, I said, I, I love my band people, so I gotta help them, so this is, this is a good thing.
Well, it's all helps to, as we already know, we said before, we, we need to improve our finance programming in the district. And so there, you'll see there are other things that we need to, can help to do that. We have students, talented students that can do, that won't go this route, but we don't offer a lot of things that that other districts have to help them apply. There's a lot of money out there, scholarship laws too that our students don't have access to, they don't have the, they don't have the skill set and programming here. So this will help.
Okay, the next one, Ms. Ford mentioned this one. So currently, there are, on average, two people in our elementary school front offices. You have a bookkeeper who is also doing power school. You have a front office person who's also doing whatever. So you've got somebody that should be doing full-time bookkeeping work or active admin to the principal. And there's simply too much work to go around to not have a third person. Because as you know, in elementary schools, the traffic in and out, people are constantly calling all day long, and it's simply a lot of work for two people. And we found it is more of an issue at our elementary schools than at our secondary schools. So we are proposing adding a third person to every elementary school front office.
So you would have a dedicated bookkeeper?
Yes, ma'am, a dedicated bookkeeper, a dedicated power school attendance person, and a dedicated front office support person.
Good.
Yes.
Okay.
Desperately need to do that. All right, we are also, and this is Chester Park, I did not include that notation, but I'll tell you, there is an additional ED self-contained teacher at the complex. The next line is an additional...
What's the next you want to mention for that ED self-contained, that that, the students are served from across the county?
Yes, at Chester Park Complex, that's right.
Right now, they're, all students are in a K-5 class. This position would allow us to split out K-2, 3, 5, to split them.
Yes.
You know, that's a lot for one teacher trying to cover kindergarten through fifth grade, ED self-contained. So this will provide another teacher to split, split that.
Exactly. The next one is an additional specialty teacher at Great Falls Elementary, based on their caseload. So Ms. Taylor has requested that. We had a couple of minor issues, so let me, let me go back and explain a little bit about why this is even in here. The athletic directors, excuse me, came up with a schedule to increase all of the coaching stipends to the tune of $167,000 district budget. And we thought, hmm, that might be a little much to try to do for coaching stipends. It was done for a reason, we understand why it was done for a reason, that reason no longer exists. But what we want to make sure, I went and did a four-district comparison of each level, 1A and 3A. We are quite comparable from the districts I used for their offices. We are quite comparable, as a matter of fact, many of them we are above. Like one of, like the, one of the 1A and 3A schools that we have in Chester, who this district also has a 1A and a 3A, their athletic director is also their football coach, so they don't get an extra stipend. Ours are individual, so they get, the AD gets a stipend on top of their salary, the football coach gets a stipend on top of their salary. What we found though was that we needed to mirror Great Falls and Louisville. And it's not off but $2,500. The AD makes a different amount at the two schools, so we are going to fix that and ensure that those two schools mirror each other in their supplements, as they should because they're both 1A schools.
Got it.
Yep. And then the next one on that same list, Louisville High School is interested in starting a wrestling program. Um, we want children to have opportunities. We did the same thing at Great Falls a year ago when they wanted to implement volleyball and have had a lot of success. So Coach Pemberton asked if we would consider wrestling stipends for wrestling coaches and begin that program at Louisville High School, and that's in the Priority One. So currently, without salaries, the estimated cost for Priority One is $759,443.
The, um, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The elementary school front office support, is that like, how many day employee would that be?
Probably 190.
Okay.
Yes, probably 190.
So it wouldn't be a full-time position?
Well, it'd be a full-time position with only 190 days.
Gotcha.
Because they'd be in while the teachers and students are there.
Okay, that's what I want to...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, so revisit next year, Priority Twos, um, the learning sister, learning sister, the learning center, um, the learning center, um, has requested funds for a restorative room. Uh, for those students, and we know they're in an alternative setting, where sometimes you just need to pull them out and stick them somewhere. Now, they do now have a behavior interventionist that we funded through ESAR. This is just an additional request, but you see it as the end date unless we visit it next year, cost, um, allocation.
Um, Chester Middle... Is a restorative room going to be manned or have cameras? Or when you put a child in a timeout place, they can't be left alone?
Yes, it's more like a decompression room, you know, like, dim lightings, some seating, the new restorative circles, uh, to have some weight equipment in there. So it's really the room where folks would be in to support students, so it's just not a timeout place.
But there will be someone in with them, you don't just put a child in a room and say, "Get over it."
For sure.
Okay, yes, ma'am. All right, Chester Middle School has requested funds for a drama teacher, as has the School of Arts. So that's a program, and Dr. Sutton mentioned a while ago, we need them to beef up our arts, but as you can tell by the Priority Ones, perhaps that's a revisit next year because those would be additional FTE positions.
And they're asking also to help with the rotation of related arts on the schedule now to allow some opportunities for students and to help decrease some of the numbers as the kids rotate for their related arts. That would help. And of course, you know, the School of the Arts, the School of the Arts, we don't have a drama teacher. So that's, again, you know, I think that's long overdue. If you, because the School of the Arts has been here since what year? In existence, since nineteen...
Nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety.
It was up in...
Well, let's say nineteen ninety-nine, still a long time.
Yeah, it's a long time, yeah.
So just keep that in mind.
Okay, the next one is a behavior interventionist at Chester Park. There could possibly in the future be additional funds in Title One or any other federal funds that were receiving. What's going to happen, though, if we go ahead and just put this bug in your ear, and I'm glad Dr. Graham's here, whatever increase those teachers get, the teachers in their Title One and all those other federal programs have to get those raises as well, and that program has to bear the costs. So eventually those monies run out, and some of this may have to go into the general fund. But that's why we put this one in the Priority Two. All right, in Great Falls Elementary, they've also requested a behavior interventionist, but theirs could be a paraprofessional, which would limit the cost.
Well, it would also limit the interaction with the student. If you put a paraprofessional, anybody who is a good person, doesn't have a record, can be a paraprof. But if you're going to have a behavior interventionist, let's have somebody who can actually help that child.
Well, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Lee and Dr. Pickens staff, you could have a certified behavior interventionist that's not a certified teacher, that has the skills to be a behavior interventionist, is that, based on our conversations, is that correct?
So there, there are some certification requirements with the title, and Ms. Licken, for this particular one, I'm trying to recall, and she said that one would be certified, but what we were saying was that you can still get that similar support with someone who is a paraprofessional. Obviously, um, some of the training would be different that a person would have, but there are places where they have, where they call them behavior management assistants that still have some skills to support the students that would not be at the same cost as a, as a certified.
It's that RBT training, I believe it is, right? Registered Behavior Technician, that? They, they would have to go through to be certified to fit this position.
And there are some, um, trainings that they can, even a par, a par person who's considered a, I guess, a non-certified classified stat person could, could go through to support and skill.
Well, a lot of grandmothers, we make great par pros.
I think there are some of us who would.
Good conversation, thank you. The next one is ELA curriculum at Great Falls Elementary and Louisville Elementary. And Ms. Lee, if you don't mind, either you or Dr. Graham could address that one, because I know y'all are meeting with them.
So, um, there's some training that our teachers at the complex have been participating in. It's called letters, and perhaps you've heard, heard us talk about it. Um, the funds for those books... Um, the funds for those books, that they're using those resources, the training and the funds, are being provided by the State Department of Education. Our question, and we still haven't gotten a definitive answer, is that, right now, the English Language Arts Standards are in their final phases for approval. And so you know, when that happens, the textbook adoption comes after that. And so the focus in terms of the approach to reading instruction is something that's being kind of woven into those standards. We anticipate that the book selection that the teachers at the complex have had would be a part of that adoption. And so right now, for us to pay that money, when the money is going to come from the state, um, it would be, to our benefit to allow the state to pay for that. Because they're gonna give a textbook allocation, you can't use that allocation for anything but the textbook adoption. So basically, textbook adoption's coming. And we wanna, if that's gonna be among the selections, then we would rather do that then. Then we also had a conversation about the fact that part of it's influencing the teachers in the complex in terms of their understanding, is their training that they're having in terms of how to use those materials. And right now, the, those teachers at those other schools have not been a part of that training, and it isn't intensive. And so what we're doing, we're gonna kind of building that piece in gradually for those teachers, so. We're thinking that the state will provide the funds at this point.
Um, the next one is a chorus call teacher at Louisville High School. Continue their drama slash chorus, and you find the question, like certification, then do some of both, because they could do musicals and musical theater and things like that, from a drama perspective. That was, that's in a priority two. And then.
And I also want to add that that would help free up, Ms. Foster, in the third fashion, of course, there is the band piece, and not the chorus piece. So this, that position would free that, uh, person up, free her up to focus more on just the band, uh, courses. And what, what, we discussed today with that, would that, would this be shared between the high school and elementary and middle, or no?
Look, this particular one, looking at it to be shared, and that was, well, it's probably a possibility.
And the last one on priority two is an additional first grade teacher at LES. Currently, the numbers are not warranted, which is why it's in a priority two for future growth that we know to come to Louisville Elementary. And then priority two totals are five hundred fifty-two five.
Now, just a question, in the first list, we had taken out the thirty-five thousand dollars a year for the, uh, band, the high school bands? That we're adding it back in, is that what I'm hearing?
It is still in the budget. High school will still, because the first three years were uniforms, the next three years were equipment, and then they start over. So this would be an additional thirty-five thousand dollars for middle school band equipment.
Well, how are you going to handle Great Falls where you have the same band director who does both the middle and the high school? And uses, and right now, they're responsible for both the middle and the high school.
They would be included in the rotation for the middle grades.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely, we would not, we would not select Great Falls just because they're on the bottom school.
Well, we have to get a band director.
Well, that's true too. All right, so priority threes, a lot of this is, um, definitely would be love to have it, but they're on wish lists, and that's why they're in three. Uh, the Learning Center is asking for an ISS coordinator, which again, could be a paraprofessional position, could possibly help with restorative learning, uh, some of the, uh, combinations of those things. Chester High School has asked for an FTE for their Abbott program and financial literacy teacher, and is in priority three. The three school, uh, three high schools ask their athletic directors to be full-time. They're currently required to be able to teach classes, or, or drama theater, or whatever else they have. But the, the UDs do not warrant full-time athletic directors, because when you make them full-time, they've got higher to teach, to do, to teach their classes. So again, that's in priority three. Ms. Jefferson has asked for an assistant director at the Career Center in priority three, maybe works out better when the new Career Center is. Also, an additional Abbott teacher at Chester Middle, they do have one, and that program continues to grow, um, perhaps an additional teacher is warranted. Um, and arts integration coach at Chesterport Arts. Currently, Colt has a technology coach that assists, and because that, since that is their focus at Colt, they have, um, they put one of their existing teachers in, um, that position. So arts wants one that helps integrate arts in the curriculum across the school. But again, again, priority, priority three. Chester Park has asked for the, um, cost of the digital marquee. Great Falls, if you've been to Great Falls High School, just spotted new one with some of their, um, other state money, state slash federal money. Beautiful, and it's very nice, but they're not cheap. So we put that in our wish list. Colt asks for a computer lab manager, again, that could be a paraprofessional, but not something that we felt was warranted at this time. Inquired staff additions, we kind of talked about that, she actually wants an additional teacher for every grade. However, the counts do not warrant an additional teacher at every grade at this time. Uh, speech pathologist on site at Great Falls Elementary, Ms. Lee has said that'd be nice, but she does not have the student count in the, in the capacity for, um, their own, um, site, uh, speech pathologist. LMS has asked for an office manager, and that's something that is advice to have, and it should be now a role.
In addition to what we're considering in the first section.
Yes ma'am, this is, that would be at Louisville Middle School. Yes ma'am. Um, a covered walkway at Louisville Middle between cafeteria and gym, we would not know the cost for that at this time until our, um, architects slash construction footwork is completed. LMS has also asked for a digital marquee, and thirty thousand dollars. Hollowing flooring at Louisville Elementary, again, if you remember, we were talking about the colored sheet, anything that was referendum oriented was in yellow and is not in here. Because the referendum passes, then a lot of that will be addressed. LES is only getting the additional wing, but there are some issues on their flooring. Maintenance has money in their flooring budget that Mr. Warren and Mr. Davis are looking at to be able to do some of that stuff mainly with their existing budget. And then a walkway bonding in the bus lane for Louisville Elementary School. Again, the construction, um, cost will have to take into consideration. And that total is nine hundred eighty thousand dollars. And so we're probably. So any questions? Okay, so unless you see something that really sticks out at you, let's see if we put priority ones in the.
So we're clear to make a sure before we move on?
Yes sir.
Is there anything, any more of the features to be shifted to a different prior, that's what we want to hear from you all at this point.
I'm big on putting people who actually teach students in the classroom. I have no problem with those. Only problems that I have is something that's over and above, and we have to raise, because I have to tell you all right now. If the bottom referendum passes, I would never agree to raise anything in the way of, um, budget as far as raising mileage. If it doesn't pass, that's a different story, and we won't go there. But I'm very happy with the first must-have, frankly, the wish list is just that. And I'm taking it that you all, the administration, says that priority one are very important to you too. Now, if it was left up to me, there is something I might not want to do, but if we give money to the assistant principals, I don't want to get another phone call that a parent has been up to the high school, uh, or whichever school. And beat on the door and tried to call and couldn't get help, anybody to come during the summer because someone needs to be at the school. I know people need to take vacation, but there's a whole year you can take vacation.
Ms. Fort, you say that, and that's one of the things that now, if you have a principal and assistant principal, and you have a two forty-five, they, one can be on vacation, the other one can be there for the remainder of school. And that's why it was important to the principals that they can work around their schedules together, if they're both two hundred forty-five day contracts.
The superintendent will not approve, believe, for both at the same time?
No.
All right, I'll go ahead and jump in.
Okay, please.
Knowing my background. Um, I, I think that if you have a school of the arts, it is all the arts. And not to have a drama teacher at the School of the Arts, knowing some of the programs that they have been able to put on in the past. I just see that as, to, at least to me, it's important. Um, how many years did I do that? And I did it for grades five through twelve. It is amazing what a drama teacher can get students to learn, that they don't necessarily learn somewhere else. There are life skills, as well as, um, personal skills that you can learn through drama. And so not to have a drama teacher at the School of the Arts, I find that difficult. But that is a very personal perspective, and I, I realize that, and, and I want to acknowledge that, but I just had to say it.
I would advocate for that as well, especially at the School of the Arts. I think it, it is pretty important to have a drama teacher there. Um, I know a lot of the students who make the choice to attend that school, some of the first, um, interests that they have in going there is being able to be a part of, you know, a drama class. Or wanting to, you know, act and be a part of performances and things like that, so.
And there are all kinds of levels of, of theater that a drama teacher teaches. Everything from, um, puppetry to radio theater, to, to a lot of other things, where you take the children that have difficulties here, and they can do this one. Somebody else who, who may not be able to get on stage, but does wonderful things with sets and costumes and theatrical makeup and this kind of thing. Um, it's, it's a rather complex subject. And that person can also work hand in hand with your teachers, so that book reports can become events or whatever.
Or even different units that's being taught for nine weeks, that there can be like a performance that, you know, the school is able to put on to kind of reemphasize what the kids learn and their, to express it. I, I would, I mean, that's something I would like to see at the art school especially, but.
Thank you.
How do you want to see what that goes for? Whether the number, or if you move that over?
It's in sixty-nine, I think it is, it's in sixty-nine.
Bring it to the.
I keep my house at seventy-three.
Is it too cool?
Yes, I guess.
Y'all have to remember, I'm on your switch.
Oh, I see, I know. I, I did that for you, I did that for you.
We need to get some of those blankets.
We hear you, all right, and it was just brought to my attention, let's remember, we want to be after them. So most schools are asking for some things that we might want to consider as well.
Well, I trust y'all's judgment completely, but.
Tearing the list apart, then you get in trouble.
Well, okay, so is that not what the, uh, the chorus teacher at the element, uh, elementary schools, are they not kind of like drama teacher, you know, is that?
It's two different, it's two different things. I could ever teach chorus.
Okay, well, I, I didn't know, yeah.
My only question is, at the last meeting, we had a wonderful presentation for the ELA and the math interventionists. And we were told that that's being paid now with ESAR funds.
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
And when the ESAR funds run out, we're, if we want to continue that, and I think that's important, then we'll have to pick them up. So here's what I don't want to do. I don't want to add, as much as I agree with you that drama and arts are almost essential, so is reading and writing, and our children were behind. So I don't want to pick up teachers and then have to do what we had to do back in the bad old days in two thousand and eight. I had to let five teachers go in one year, and they, because we just didn't have the money to pay them, and we really needed it. And we really need the interventionists. Now, if, if I approve a math interventionist, that's not going away. That's going to be full-time, ESAR funds aren't going to affect that math teacher one bit.
Yes ma'am.
So that's for that school. But if I don't approve them for every school, when will the money run out?
And after the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Okay, so we have twenty-three, twenty-four, in order to find the money to keep our interventions if they're needed.
Yes ma'am.
And somehow I don't think that they're not going to be needed.
And also remember that we have two nurses that we will have to put in the general fund as well.
Right, okay, I, I understand that, and I think I want the best for our students, but I want to be respectful of the people who are going to pay the bills.
Okay. Well, we will certainly look at as part of the budget, um, writing, and, um, we can always, as I was once told, sharpen my pencil and take some things out if we need to. Okay? Any other conversation about the priority list? Thank you, we, we loved this exercise, it was really good conversation in this room. We looked up stuff, we talked, we, I would say we argued, but we had a lot of good discussion. We didn't really argue, it was very comfortable this session.
They argued, I kept them on. My belt out.
No, it was Kenny, it's at the time it was, okay. All right, so are y'all good, you want to take a quick break?
Quick break.
Yes, we can break.
Take a break.
Break would be lovely.